Good evening and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the whole regular meeting for Monday, September 9th, 2024. Deputy Clerk Gravetti, could I please have the roll call?
Mayor Bremel is absent. Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, everyone, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now's the time we set aside for citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience or have we received any public comments? Sure, go ahead. Please go to the podium, state your name and address, and offer your remarks. Welcome.
Evening, guys. I'm Jimba Jimba. I love that. Three seven, three S five seventy one, Cappuccino Home. And this weekend, nice and calm, but there was a Tootsie Roll drive for disabled people. This is thirty, forty, and fifty. Thank you, God bless you.
Okay, thank you very much. Tootsie Roll Drive on the 13th and 14th, correct?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead with officials and staff members' comments, beginning with the mayor's absence, so we'll go right to the aldermen. Are there any aldermen that have comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, any staff members? Okay, we'll begin the business of the meeting. And tonight's first agenda item is consideration of the municipal code updates for code enforcement. And Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery will introduce this item. Welcome.
Thank you. Nothing like starting off with code enforcement. I promise, though, it won't be too painful. In my opinion, successful code enforcement boils down to three things: communication, relationship building, and having an effective code. The agenda item that you have this evening is to improve our code in three ways. First, the change we're looking to make is to provide consistent language with respect to judgments and appeals. There are a couple sections of our code today that use different language and descriptors than other sections, and so this change would align all of the verbiage to be consistent. The second change is to clarify property owner rights and responsibilities for maintaining public property in front of their homes. That would be the land between the edge of the street and the sidewalk, if there is one, or the edge of the street and their property. And the third change is to address inconsistencies in the way residents can inform the city about code violations they see. The code right now requires a very formal written notification, but in practical reality, that's not how we receive our notices of code violations. We receive calls and emails, and even as the code enforcement officer is out in town, he may be have a conversation with someone. And coming soon, you will have the opportunity to report code violations using the Citizen app. So we're requesting to make changes to the code to reflect the way that complaints are coming in today, so we can continue to conveniently provide opportunities for our residents to report issues, and we can address them. Happy to answer any questions that you have about this item.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody with any questions or comments regarding the code enforcement issue in front of us? Seeing none, would anyone, Alderman Lockett, care to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, recommend the city council direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to provide clarifications and modifications to the city code pertaining to code enforcement practices.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks for your research and all your diligent work on that, and also thanks for all the code enforcement efforts in the community. It really makes a difference. And it'll be interesting to learn how the new app works. So our next agenda item is consideration of the Warren Tavern property PSA and lease agreements. And again, Community and Economic Development Director Emery will present this item.
Thank you. Back in March, the city council directed the city attorney to negotiate an agreement with the Warren Tavern preservation, excuse me, preservationist, to convey the tavern to the city. City Administrator White, Attorney Lenaman, and I spent much of the summer in discussions with the Warren Tavern preservationists, preparing two separate agreements that are included in the agenda packet this evening. The first is the actual purchase and sale agreement, which defines the process and the timing for transferring the tavern property to the city. And the second is a lease agreement that outlines the relationship we'll have going forward with the city as a landlord and the tavern preservationist as our tenant. That agreement is very comprehensive, as we work through many different items and challenges in their operations, including property maintenance requirements, the care of furnishings, how we'll handle third-party rental management responsibilities, liquor licensing, and even cleaning schedules, which appears later on this agenda as a separate item. Tonight, I'm requesting a committee recommendation to pass a resolution authorizing both of these agreements. And it's worth noting that if approved ultimately by council, the lease will not be fully executed and effective until the closing. Quite simply, we can't lease a property we don't own. So there'll be a bit of a delay, but we would complete the lease agreement no later, in the closing, no later than the end of October, in accordance with the request, the initial request from the tavern with respect to their insurance challenges and timing. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions? Alderman Lockett?
In regards to the lease, is there a term limit on the lease? Or I guess what the plan would be later on down the road when those that are involved or if others don't step up to kind of handle the events and the things that they're having?
So there's a couple of things going on with respect to the term. First, it's a renewable lease, so it would renew on an annual basis, assuming things are operating in a successful fashion. And then there are provisions in the lease if there are problems, where the lease can be terminated.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, would someone care to make a motion? Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recommend, number one, the city council pass a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with the Warren Tavern Illinois Preservationists, NFP, for the transfer of the Warren Tavern building to the city. And two, the city council pass a resolution approving and authorizing the lease agreement with the Warren Tavern Preservationists, Warren Tavern Illinois Preservationists, NFP, for use of the Warren Tavern building.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration of project goals, next steps for the rental registration program. And once again, we have Community and Economic Development Director Emery to present this information. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going for a hat trick this evening. So with this item, Community Development is looking to make a change to our adopted work plan. And I want you to know from the onset of this, we take a change to the work program very seriously. We spend a great deal of time putting the work program together, thinking through what are the responsibilities and requirements when you add an item to the work plan, particularly tier-one items. And this is an item that we've had some concerns about, and so let me talk you through as to why it's on your agenda this evening. First, I think many of you are aware that this particular work plan item, rental registration, and before that, there was crime-free housing language as well, has been a part of the Community Development Work Program for many, many years. And included in the backup agenda materials is a memo describing the history and the efforts that have been made by staff with respect to this program. This year, as we were initiating our work program, we spent a great deal of time looking at our, first, our comparable communities to understand what they are doing and not doing with respect to rental registration. We spoke with experts, we reviewed case law, and we looked at challenges that are out there. And that research is included in a summary fashion in the agenda packet. What we found gave us a great deal of concern, and it caused us to pause and convene a meeting of the work group, which includes Alderman Ashauer and Alderman Berry. We had that meeting in August. Chief Bonilla was a part of that conversation, Chief Code Official Lilly, and Administrator White. And what we recognized is, when we looked back at the time when this agenda item was first added to the Community Development Work Plan some years ago, there were concerns in the communities, more specific to crime, crime-free housing concerns. And whether those concerns were real or perceived, there was definitely a need that was felt to address those as a part of the work plan. But as we fast forward to where we are today, those same concerns are not found in the community. Chief Bonilla was really clear in the conversation in terms of his relationship with the neighborhoods in the community, the community policing model that he uses today versus housing approaches in the past, that's establishing a different relationship and dynamic with our community. And in the time that's passed since this was originally on the Community Development Work Plan and today, the neighborhoods themselves have taken action to address, again, concerns that exist, whether real or perceived. They have made changes to their leasing restrictions and parking requirements to address overcrowding issues and other issues related to the crime-free housing element. So through the discussion, the work group felt comfortable that staff can achieve similar benefits through education and outreach rather than having a regulatory program. In fact, when you look at the data of our comparable communities, an argument could be made that we would really be an outlier among the comparables, particularly of those of our population size, with such a program. We're not abandoning the idea completely. We did commit to taking a look at this again in 2030. That would be a point in time when we're nearing the end of our next strategic plan, and we would give it a valuation at that point, if the education is working or if circumstances have changed, and we need to add it or recommend adding it back to the work plan. So that's the long and short of it, why we're requesting to make this change to our work plan. Again, we take these changes very seriously and wanted to bring it forward for your full consideration. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your tremendous research and to the staff that did all the research. This item has been kind of hanging out there for years, so it's great to finally see it addressed. And also, I give thanks to the work group's efforts and involvement in all of this. So with that, are there questions? Alderman Davalos?
Not really a question, but I think having the chief there was a great idea, because he and that whole department are very proactive, hopefully supported by us, in a lot of their programs, their training, everything else. And so if he is on board with this, I think that's a lot, including the group, but I think that was a good, wise choice to help that along. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council concur with the work group recommendation and direct staff to revise the Community Development Fiscal Year 2025 work plan to remove the rental, registration, and crime-free housing programs.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And again, thank you to the work group for their efforts and to all the staff's great efforts regarding all the research and work that they did on this. Our next item is consideration of a cleaning contract for city buildings, and Asset Management Analyst Cassandra Hernandez Galvin will introduce this agenda item. Welcome.
Good evening. So the city's current cleaning contract ends October 31st. We issued a request for proposals, proposals in July, and we received, well, 13 vendors attended our mandatory site visit, and we received 10 proposals. The process included interviews with several staff from all the departments to gather information about our current janitorial cleaning service and their performance and areas of improvement. And once we received those proposals, we broke them down into three tiers: the low, the medium, and the high. Currently, we are in the low tier, and logically, with additional work that this request for proposal included, staff felt that it wasn't feasible to get what, the desired quality of work in the low tier, which ultimately made us move into the middle tier of vendors. And we determined through the middle tier, the selection of Bravo Services Incorporated, based off their experience, the references, and their price. So Bravo Services Incorporated has been in business for seven years. They currently provide services to the Village of Oaklawn, the Batavia Park District, the King County Health Department, and even Warrenville's own Warrenville Park District. So with that, I could take any questions.
Questions or concerns? Alderman Lockett?
With this new contract, too, though, we're adding the buildings, I think that we had discussed, from the Warrenville Tavern, and also the trailhead bathroom stuff out here. Are we adding CERNIE, or was CERNIE always part of it?
So CERNIE has always been part of it. The trailhead is in here, and so is the Warren Tavern.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's fantastic that you bundled all the different city buildings and the police department and everything as part of this contract, because I think it leads to a lot of efficiencies and cost savings when you do things this way. So if there's no other questions, Alderman Lockett? Care?
I'd like to make a motion, recommend the city council pass a resolution approving a contract with Bravo Services, Inc. for janitorial services at city municipal facilities for a three-year term at an annual rate of $72,360.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is consideration of a contract to upgrade the keyless entry system, and Public Works Director Kukler will present this item. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, the city currently utilizes a keypad system for access control for its three main buildings. System is, current system is aging and requires frequent repairs. You may recall that as part of the fiscal year '24 budget, city council approved a decision package to upgrade the keypad system to proximity card readers. That project didn't happen last year, which we weren't able to fit it in, so it was rebudgeted for this current fiscal year. As part of that project, when we're using proximity cards, there won't be a keypad anymore, there'll be a card that just be pulled up to a sensor and it opens or unlocks the door. We're going to combine that proximity card with the city IDs, so for elected officials and staff that have IDs, those will get printed directly on those cards in the future once they're in place. Staff issued a request for proposals back in March of this year. The RFP was advertised in the Daily Herald, it was posted on the city website, and we also emailed it to known vendors. Three vendors ultimately came in for our kind of pre-proposal meeting that was required, and then those same three vendors also proposed on the project. They submitted prices of approximately $63,000, $84,000, and $206,000. And while price is a factor in our consideration of that, and we were clear in the RFP that price would be a factor, it was not going to be the only factor. This is not a low-bid process. Staff interviewed the two lower-priced vendors, checked references, we spent time looking at the system, evaluating their software, because actions with our current system, in addition to it aging and needing repairs, as the software is not intuitive, is very difficult to perform simple tasks with some of the locking of, and changing schedules of doors and adding staff and that kind of stuff. Based on the evaluation, staff is recommending a contract with Orbis Solutions, who is also the city's IT provider, or provides the city's IT services. Some additional improvements were identified by the police department after the RFP was issued. So public work staff and police department staff walked through each of the buildings with Orbis to form a detailed look, and not just what the additional items were to be added, nor are there a couple of doors that need to be added, but also evaluated, really evaluated the hardware that was in place and made sure any of the door strikes that might be obviously failing right now or close to failing would be replaced as part of this. So the resulting recommended contract is approximately $77,000. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. There are questions from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So I'm sure that you've interviewed people that are using this, or there's, Orbis knows people that are using it or whatever. Now, you have to be there. I mean, it's in your head what your code is to put in. If these cards get lost, is there a way to, you know, I don't know, through the internet or some way to track if you're, if you report it then, and that code, that card gets used, then it can be flagged? Or what do you do in cases of people that lose their cards, and anybody could just pick them up?
So once we, once we were aware that they're lost, we can deactivate them in the system. They wouldn't be deleted from the system, but then we also have the ability to track if somebody did try to use that card to access the building. They just wouldn't be able to get in.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'd request a motion. Alderman Lockett?
Recommend the city council pass a resolution approving a contract with Orbis Solutions, Inc. for a keyless entry system for city buildings in the amount of $77,039.63.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we're on to item number six, consideration of the Highway Authority Agreement with the IEPA for Warrenville Road. Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will present this item. Christine?
Thank you. Good evening. As part of the, in order to obtain a no further remediation letter from the IEPA for the leaking underground storage tank or lust program for the old Sitco gas station on the corner of Warrenville Road and Batavia Road, we, the city is required to enter into a highway authority agreement with the IEPA. This authority agreement documents that the city, as the owner of the road, will dispose of any contamination that is found during a road project, as part of that project, and will dispose it as, at a proper facility. This is actually a common practice in road construction. You're, you're, if you're going to send any soil to a disposal site, you have to submit a report essentially saying that the soil is clean. If it's not clean, then it has to get sent to a proper disposal facility. So this is not anything out of the ordinary, it's just that we know that there could be contamination within the right-of-way. It is under an IGA that's being currently amended with the county that it is our road, and this just documents that, that we own the road with the IPA. Our city attorney did review the highway authority agreement. I had some back and forth with the IPA, and the form that you see in the backup material is the form that was accepted by her and the IPA. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Seeing none, Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute the highway authority agreement with the IEPA for Warrenville Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. And the next item is consideration of resolution committing additional funding to the Route 59 multi-use path and sidewalk project for ITUP grant submission. And I'm not sure if, Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will present this item. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So the city already has received STP, Surface Transportation Funding, for this project, the Route 59 multi-use path project, that will pay for 75% of construction and construction engineering. A, another grant program called the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program is currently open in its funding cycle. It pays for actually 80% of final engineering, construction, and construction engineering, and any easement acquisition that would be required at an 80/20, except for the right-of-way, it's 50/50. So staff deemed, decided that this would be a good grant program to apply for, even though we have the STP funding. If we did get the ITUP funding, this would save the city an additional $500,000 in local funding. Like I said, the grant period is open, and a resolution for pledging funds, city funds for the project is required as part of the application, which is, the resolution is provided in the backup. With that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you for staying so alert to all these grant funding opportunities. Truly appreciate it. Alderman Lockett?
But we won't lose the STP funding.
Correct, yes. We still have it, no matter what. If we get the ITUP funding, then we would let DMMC know that we won't need the STP funding then.
Okay, so we have nothing to lose, we can only gain half a million bucks.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you. Good job.
Would, any other questions or comments? If not, would you like to add on to that thought, Alderman Lockett?
Let's do it. I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council pass a resolution authorizing staff to apply for the ITUP grant and pledging to provide the city funds necessary for the local share for the Route 59 multi-use paths project.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you again. Next item is to review and file an information report on the 2022 Tiff District School and Library District reimbursement payments. And Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery will answer any questions or field any comments that you might have regarding this item. Does anyone care to? All right, I don't see anything, so thank you for a job well done and for the report. The next item is the OTR, number two, requests for proposals information. And that's, again, for our information. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, moving on to item 10, we have the Holidays Market Information Update, and Community Economic and Development Director Amy Emery will present information on this that you may not have heard about, but it's an exciting new opportunity. Director Emery?
Sure. This is a work, it's related to our work plan item of creating opportunities for entrepreneurs in the community, including pop-up shops and opportunities for economic development at community events. We've had a really great series of initial conversations with the Park District about including a market space as a part of the annual holidays event. We will be having the market here in this room, and we believe we can accommodate approximately 10 different vendors, maybe a few more, depending on the space requirements they have. The applications went out for this on our website on the 29th of August, and already I've received a number of great inquiries about potential vendors that want to take advantage of this opportunity. We will review all of the applications we receive in October, notify those that are successful by October 15th, and then be ready to have the market on December 6th. As a part of the collaboration with the Park District, not only did they embrace the opportunity to include this, they are also working with their horse-drawn trolley experience to include a stop here at the market, so people have a multitude of options for deciding how they want to shop and, and get some holiday trinkets. So just really excited to bring this to the community. In my conversations with entrepreneurs, the one thing they tell me over and over is, we're looking for more chances to meet with customers and share what it is that we're providing. And so I think this is a great segue into that and see more wonderful things happening in the future. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. It'd be a great expansion to that, that already successful event, and it's never too early to start thinking about the holidays. Does anybody have any questions, comments? All right, well, thank you for the report. Comments? All right, well, thank you for the report. Our next item is the, to review and file the Economic Development Report. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding that? If not, we'll file it as indicated, and move on to the review and filing of the bimonthly code enforcement activity report. Does anyone see anything within that report that they'd like to comment on or question? Seeing none, we're on a roll. We'll move on to the next item, which is to review and file the Fiscal Year 2025 Community Development Work Plan Program Report. Does anyone have any comments or concerns regarding that? Seeing, oh, Alderman Davalos?
So the item that you removed, the crime-free housing and the rental registration, that just gets backfilled automatically with, with the things that are already on this year's economic, economic plan? Or do you have an, already an idea, or?
We don't have a different project to replace it with. There's plenty of stuff on our work plan, and with some recent staff changes, we definitely have plenty to do.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of this evening's topics. If there's nothing under miscellaneous, there's no closed session, we have one more item. Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Okay, with a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't think so. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for your participation and your efforts. Thank you.